the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plank City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Welcome to the August 11th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning Commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for the local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. For action items, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chair. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal response. Planning Commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I'd like to ask Commissioner Bowden to lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. All please rise.
Today, we focus on the objectives we have as Planning Commissioners to fulfill our mission to promote, coordinate, collaborate, and facilitate with all people in creating and implementing the long-range planning envisioned for our community, to improve economic development, quality of life, and provide value-added services. Help us to make decisions that fulfill that mission. Bless us as we meet together today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the Church of St. One nation, indivisible, liberating, just as well.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bowden. With that, I'd like to ask the clerk to please go ahead and call roll.
Bowden?
Here.
Buzza, Cardenas?
Here.
Kona, Cress, Kugler?
Here.
Lenkus?
Here.
Seben?
Orton?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Chair Joseph?
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. Next item of business is the approval of the minutes for the following meetings. Hillsborough County Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, June 9th, 2025. Hillsborough County Planning Commission Public Hearing on Hillsborough County Plan Amendments Meeting Minutes, June 9th, 2025. Hillsborough County Planning Commission Public Hearing on City of Plan, City Plan Amendments Meeting Minutes, June 9th, 2025. Hillsborough County Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, July 14th, 2025, and Hillsborough County Planning Commission Public Hearing on Hillsborough County Plan Amendments Meeting Minutes, July 14th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
All right. Commissioner Bowden makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lenkus. Any questions from the Commissioners before we take our vote? Would all signify their agreement by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All righty. Onto our business. We didn't have anyone sign up for public input on items not on the agenda, so we are moving to our action items. And our first one is 3A, Hillsborough County, four-year, 26 through four-year, 31. Capital Improvement Program and Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects Update, and the presenter is Erica Larson.
Good afternoon. Erica Larson, Planning Commission Staff. This item is the Planning Commission's review of the Hillsborough County's Capital Improvement Program, CIP, and Capital Improvement Section, CIS, Schedule of Projects Update. This is an action item. Chapter 97-351 requires that the Planning Commission reviews the updated CIPs on an annual basis. Chapter 163 requires that the schedule of projects or the list of projects addressing level of service and adopted in the comprehensive plan be updated on an annual basis. The update would replace existing CIS schedule in the comprehensive plan with the schedule listed in your packets. County staff identified projects in the CIS that affect the level of service. These items make up the schedule of projects. The update is accomplished by ordinance, which is explicitly permitted under Chapter 163. Additionally, the plans of other agencies are incorporated. Displayed is a summary of the CIP projects which are placed into eight program areas. You can see the largest groups in terms of funding are transportation and water enterprise. The total funding amount for fiscal year 26 through fiscal year 31 is 4.8 billion for 326 projects. There are five main categories included in the CIS schedule. Transportation, which includes sidewalks, bridges, and other pedestrian enhancements, solid waste, water enterprise, stormwater, and parks. Displayed is a summary of the CIP projects which are placed into eight program areas. You can see the largest groups in terms of funding are transportation and water enterprise. Oh, I'm sorry. 4.25 billion, 89% of CIP projects addressing level of service are CIS Schedule of projects, and 505 million, 11% are non-CIS Schedule of projects. The following graphic displays level of service priorities for the CIS Schedule of projects. 1.4 billion, 32% are eliminating deficiency. 961 million, 23% are eliminating level of service. 1.9 billion, 45% are future growth projects, and 4.5 million, less than 1% is eliminating deficiency and future growth. The breakdown of level of service project types identified by the county is consistent with the level of service priorities outlined in CIS Policy 1.1.8. 170 projects, 1.1 billion, are located within the urban service area, and 24 projects, 1.3 billion, are located outside of the urban service area. Several large projects are intended to serve both urban service area and rural area population and are technically located in the rural area. So that's why there's a large financial amount in the rural area. The breakdown of rural and urban service area projects identified by the county is consistent with Flu Objective 1 and One Water Policy 3.1.3. 26 CIP projects are located in the CHHA and are consistent with CIS Objective 1.5. These projects serve existing development, renovate or replace existing facilities, and enhance public access to natural areas. Planning Commission staff finds the county administrators recommended fiscal year 26 through fiscal year 31, CIP and CIS schedule consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. This concludes my presentation. Myself, as well as county staff are available for any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment on this one, so I will turn it over to Commissioners for questions, discussions, comments. Commissioner Cress?
I have a, I have a comment that's based on assumptions because admittedly, I did not look through the whole CIP packet. But when you go back to the level of service, I know that there's some maybe more progressive and evolving ways to measure level of service. And I wondered if you knew if the county was looking at any of that. And then I also wondered if enhanced transit, maybe even funding transit, would be a way to address level of service concerns. And it's okay if you don't know all those answers.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly get back to you on that.
And I would just add that, and Katrina can help me if I'm messing this up, but the level of service for transportation is like one that's utilized for planning purposes. It's not something that's handled, utilized for concurrency anymore. And I do think they added something related to transit in their mobility section, but she's the expert.
Katrina Corcoran, Planning Commission Staff. Yes, that is correct. There, we did add within the LOS of the Capital Improvement Section of the county's plan, different ways of looking at mobility. However, it is used for planning purposes and not a requirement that the county has to meet.
Do you happen to know if transit is one of the?
It is. We have a, yes, we, yeah, we have a transit density chart that looks at level of service of transit and looks at the population, the context classification, and kind of looks at all of those together. And it's something that the county and our staff and heart staff worked towards when we were updating that plan.
Maybe that would actually lead to some more transit projects someday. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments from the Commissioners before I go on and close down the public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the Commissioners on this one. Commissioner Lenkus?
I'll make a motion that the fiscal year 26 to 31 CIS and CIP are consistent with the comprehensive plan.
A motion, second by Commissioner Kugler. All right. A motion of consistency filed by Commissioner Lenkus, a second to that motion by Commissioner Kugler. Are there any questions, comments, discussions from the Commissioners before we take our vote? Then would all signify their agreement by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next item of business, 3B, Bomb Boyette Scrub Nature Preserve Management Plan, and the presenter is Diego Guerra.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Diego Guerra, Planning Commission Staff. The item being presented is the Bomb Boyette Scrub Nature Preserve Management Plan, which was presented, or I'm sorry, submitted by Hillsborough County for consensus, consistency determination with the unincorporated, for the, for consistency determination with the comprehensive plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County per Chapter 97-351 laws of Florida. At this time, Hillsborough County staff will provide a presentation on the preserve.
Good afternoon. My name is Jan Cor, and I work for Hillsborough County Conservation and Environmental Lands Management on the environmental lands side of the organization. Okay, what I have before you is a picture of the preserve. It's located on County Road 672 in Wy Mama. And in red, in the number three, you can see how critical the preserve is to the connectivity of protected lands in the county. The larger picture shows you some of the amenities are trails, the boundaries of the preserve as well. Along with it indicates that the total acreage of the preserve is 4,870 acres. 3,595 are owned by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. 1,275 are owned by Hillsborough County. We co-manage that with the management plan with the state. The preserve falls within the Ella Fire River corridor watershed, and it represents 11 habitats, has some of the most contiguous connectivity to some of our scrub habitats, scrub flatwood habitats. We break the management plan out in two parts, two-year and 10-year. Two-year plans are to continue our seasonal vegetative wildlife monitoring, treat non-native invasive species on an established schedule, continue to monitor and install our fire lanes, maintain and update our GIS data to manage and track all of our land management activities, coordinate with other agencies, or burn, to burn our burn units on a scheduled rotation as resources, resources allow. And as many of you know, that's weather, that's fuel moistures, but it's also the wind and smoke management. And to continue to evaluate our successes and challenges as the south end of the county continues to grow. The second half of the plan is a 10-year plan, and we continue to monitor trends and changes in the population size and health of our, all the populations we're monitoring, whether they be wildlife or plant, continue to monitor our burn units, try to keep our established rotation to maintain a healthy ecosystem, which is the goal overall of this management plan, to maintain a healthy ecosystem, and to determine that our goals are being met, to continue long-term monitoring of our known invasive species, and to monitor for, heaven forbid, they keep popping up the new invasive species, whether they be plants or critters. And then to maintain our databases in cooperation and in sync with the Florida Natural Areas Inventory, which is the state standard. So our data matches up with theirs. We can collaborate on anything as we move forward. Super important, we continue our partnerships and our collaboration with our sister agencies, the Florida Wildlife Commission, Southwest Florida Water Management District, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And I apologize, I did not forward my slides. It's really kind of fun to kind of sing the praises. We've had a couple of really good accomplishments, really neat accomplishments on this property. One is a partnership with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service with a restoration grant to restore tortoise habitat. Tortoises are keystone species. Really cool, because their burrows are obviously their homes. But in times of stress and others, they are habitat for other critters during a fire. Rabbits, small mammals, reptiles, and all seek refuge from a fire in those burrows. Our indigo snakes, listed species, use those burrows. So you can see from 2010 to 2018, the progress we've made in restoring that piece of habitat with that partnership. The other really one, what's really kind of cool, it's hard to tell, and this is a partnership with the Southwest Florida Water Management District to restore stallion hammock. There's photo of 2018 from the air. It's part of the old mosaic phosphate mine property from the air in 2023, but it doesn't do justice unless you see the ground picture, what it looks like now. So that's an ongoing project. We've completed the restoration project, but we'll continue to grow that out. Just for your information, during this last 10-year period, we've had 59 prescribed fires, five wildfires, if you count the one last week, six lightning in Florida. We've 96-plus spray events. We've done 24 mechanical restorations of reductions out there. So the goal is to continue to monitor the habitat in the best and healthiest way possible. And I thank you for your time.
Ladies and gentlemen, the slide consists of policies used to provide some of the goal, some of the objectives and policies used to formulate a consistency determination. And at this time, staff recommends that Plan Commission find the Bomb Boyette Scrub Nature Preserve Management Plan update consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. At this time, we're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. All right. We didn't have anyone sign up in the public comment on this one either, so I will turn it over to Commissioners. Commissioner Cress?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that it's, it's a really beautiful property and a fun fact to share about the gopher tortoise burrows. She mentioned that they're, during storms and stuff, a lot of different animals use the burrows. And it's my understanding that they all just have a, an agreement that they won't eat each other while they're hiding out in the burrows. Am I right on that, Jan? And I, Jan, I don't remember what the ELAP map looks like, but I wondered, is there, are there some targeted adjacent properties that could help turn this into more of a wildlife corridor? Do you happen to know that?
We are not part in Hillsborough County of the classic wildlife corridor, although we partner with them and we interface with them as much as possible. If you look at, and I don't apologize, I don't have one with me, a map of our properties. Our department manages over 88,000 acres in Hillsborough County. 66,000 of that is within the ELAP program. And one of the big goals is connectivity, to have habitat connectivity for the wildlife. But it's also pretty cool, because we're now, we're getting to have longer trails. So people can actually hike longer and not just have to do like a mile and a half loop and come back. They can, now the trails are all starting to interconnect.
Do you happen to know if Bomb Boyette has some opportunities to purchase some adjacent lands? Is that on the target list?
It's right, not, not right now. We do interconnect with Bomb Scrub and Triple Creek.
Okay.
We just added another section to Triple Creek. So we have Triple Creek 1, 2, and I have to present to FCT later this week for Triple Creek 3.
Oh, cool. Thanks.
Okay.
All right. Good question. Next, Commissioner Kugler.
Yes, thank you. I echo Commissioner Cress. That's a beautiful property for biking or for hiking. My, my question was, do the residents that move in closer to the preserve who actually have wonderful access to it then, are they aware that the burning is part of the deal?
We, whenever?
They can't complain?
Whenever, we, we do get phone calls sometimes. We do a really good job of trying to reach out to the community and make sure we have burns coming in. We, smoke management is a big part of it. We offer HOAs, the opportunity for us to come out and present to them. We have the Fire Fest and all, but we do, at some times, we will actually go out and knock on doors for some of the communities to let them know we're burning. And we do any reduction, fuel reduction projects. There are times we will actually go out, knock on doors, leave pamphlets, and just literally walk neighborhoods. It's an ongoing challenge for sure.
All right. Thank you. Were there any other questions, Commissioner?
I just want to say that the restoration work looks really impressive and kudos. Yeah, beautiful picture.
Right. Are there comments, questions, discussion items from the Commissioners? Not seeing any, then I will go on ahead and close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions by the Commissioners on this one. Anyone out there? Commissioner Lenkus?
I will make a motion that the Bomb Boyette Nature Preserve Management Plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right. Motion of consistency by Commissioner Lenkus. Commissioner?
That's second in motion.
All right. Second by Commissioner Bowden. Are there any questions from the Commissioners before we take our vote? Comments? Not seeing any, then we'll all signify their agreement by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next up, we have item 3C, Unincorporated Hillsborough County Land Development Code Text Amendment, LDC 25-0957, subdivision of parcels on septic tank in the urban service area, and the presenter is Tyreek Royal.
Good afternoon. Tyreek Royal, Planning Commission Staff. I'm here to represent Israel Monsanto from Hillsborough County Development Services Department. This is the action item who will give a review of the request.
Thank you. Israel Monsanto, Hillsborough County Development Services. Commissioners, this is LDC 250957, subdivision of parcels on septic tank in the urban service area. This amendment will revise the requirement for sanitary sewer connection This amendment will revise the requirement for sanitary sewer connections for development in the urban service area. This is what we presented last month. No major changes. Again, the amendment will allow for the subdivision of a parcel of land for residential use into up to three parcels or non-residential development with an equivalent wastewater flow to be served by septic systems, provided connection to a wastewater line is not technically feasible. The amendment will also remove the requirement to obtain a variance for residential subdivision, creating a third lot or non-residential development with an equivalent water flow. So we're going back to how it was adopted in the code before, a couple of years ago in 2020, with the difference that this time, property owners will not have to go through a variance process to get actually to a third lot. And that concludes my presentation.
Plan and Commissioner Staff have reviewed the text amendment 25-0957 and have found it to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, including objective 4.1, policy 4.1.2, which relates to the requirement that development meets all established land development regulations. That concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We didn't have anyone sign up for public comment for this one either, so I'll turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioner Kress?
No, she's chatty today. I'm not going to vote against this, but I just kind of wanted to go on record to say that I, I kind of hate environmentally, that we're making it easier to go, you know, to facilitate more septic when I think there's been lots of proof out there. That's not the best way to handle the environment. But I understand from the developer's perspective why they want to make this easier.
All right. Good comments. Commissioner Kress. Commissioner Kugler?
Thank you. The real question I had was, this, this is a septic in a fairly sensitive area in terms of perhaps flooding. Either, will we, at the design level or at the mitigation level, are there, are there ways to deal with this? So we don't have, for instance, raw sewage. It's not a septic system. It's, it potentially could be a raw sewage dumping into the surrounding environment.
All property owners will have to go through the Health Department permitting process, which they will review placement and location and make sure that they meet all the buffers. This is just for, from our code perspective, that we, you know, the code would allow them to at least get to up to three lots without going to the expenses and feasibility criteria that, that they'll probably won't be able even to, to develop their parcels because of what, how the code requires it today. But they do have to go through all the strict permitting from the Health Department.
Thank you. All right. Are there questions, comments from the commissioners? Seeing any, going once, going twice. I will go ahead and close the public comment on this one and...
Sorry. Before you get to three times. So we had, we had talked about this one before, but I think this is really helpful for some residents who might not be able to divvy up their property at all or, you know, recoup anything from a sale of a portion of their property without having to improve the entire property and going to a sewer system, which can be very expensive for some of these larger parcels. So just giving everyone a recap of what we had talked about before.
Right. Yeah. Good point. Good point. Wasn't about developers. This one's about homeowners, mom and pops out there with big pieces of land who want to make something for their parents or their children, right? They have this onus of having to connect to the public sewer, so we're trying to alleviate some of that from them, so.
And if I could just add on to that, I think some of the genesis of this coming back is that we just are, have expanded the urban service area into large areas that have been rural for so long, that those rural landowners today are, well, before the urban service area was expanded on them, they were able to subdivide their property and have another septic tank when they were in the rural area. So that's part of the reason why we're adding.
Still don't have to like it. And I did say I'd vote for it, but I get, I get the pragmatic part of it.
All right. Commissioner Bowden?
I have one question in regards to the subdividing of the properties, so, and the septic tank. So three-acre parcel, they divided, divided into three, one-acre piece, parcels. Does each acre have to have their own septic?
Correct.
Yes. Thanks.
Commissioner Oden?
Are we also making sure that they're not in flood zones and in wetlands? Because if they're in wetlands, the septics will be floating. Just...
Well, they will be reviewed against, you know, location of wetlands, uplands. And then again, the Health Department will also review whether the location is, is appropriate or not. So yes, they, they will have to go through the appropriate and applicable permitting process. But yeah, that's, that's, that's a good question.
Any other questions, comments on this one from the commissioners? All right. Three times, public comment is closed. So I will now open it up to the commissioners for motions on this one. Anyone? Commissioner Linkus, again?
I'll make a motion, the Land Development Code 25-0957 is consistent with the Hillsborough, unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan.
All right. We have a motion of consistency filed, and a second to that motion by Commissioner Kugler. Are there any questions, comments, or discussions from the commissioners before we go on ahead and take our vote on this item? Not seeing any, then we'll, oh, I forgot, we have a disagree. Let's just take it to a roll call vote then on this one. Dissenter, a stated dissenter.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress?
I'm sorry. I said yes. I said I would vote for it, but I didn't like it.
Kugler?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Seben? Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
My apologies, Commissioner Kress. I thought you were, I thought you were going to stand on it. Come on, what's going on?
I knew my odds.
All right. So the next item of business is 3D, City of Tampa Land Development Code text amendments. And we got a bunch of them, so I'll start with number one, 27-61, reviewing, hearing, and the presenter is Danny Collins.
The next 12 amendments, I'm just going to open it up. The next 12 amendments are proposed amendments to the City of Tampa's Land Development Code, including, these are all including the July 2024 L E C cycle. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric Cotton from the city to go over the amendments.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioner Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. So this is the July cycle, this July 2024 cycle, this was, should have been all adopted, but Helene and Milton thought otherwise. So this was pushed back roughly a year. Again, as some of y'all are familiar with, we do two cycles per year. This is the one in January, one in July. We don't have a January cycle for 2025 because this is the cycle we're picking up on. So this is where we're at right now. We're August 2025. Normally, after this hearing, when the planning commission makes their findings, it goes to first reading with city council. This year, primarily because of Senate Bill 180, we're going back in September, the end of September at their September 25th workshop to present this information again. Legal then is going to be, our legal department's going to be presenting issues with which ordinances or proposed ordinances may be in violation of 180 or possibly in violation of 180. And then council will then make a decision on what they want to move forward and what they want to withhold for willingness. We don't have any more hurricanes for another two years, then they would revisit that at that time. So again, so September 25th, we'll be taking this back to city council for a workshop. First set of the, of what we're doing today are the council-initiated text amendments, 2761, which is the review process. Council wants to remove the hearing officer process for the formal decisions and make them go straight to city council. 27150 is the ability of the zoning administrat, you wanted to skip through?
No, I think they may need to vote on each one individually.
I was just doing, I can skip. We just do the, wanted to start with that one?
Oh, yeah. That'd be perfect. Thank you.
I was just doing a quick overview. Okay. Do y'all go in first, or am I going to go first?
I'll just give an overview of the...
Okay. I know we talked about this, but yeah. So again, Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. So section 27, 1, 2761 is the review process that the City of Tampa has in place. Currently, when somebody does a formal decision process, which is an administrative review and interpretation, it goes to a hearing officer first. Then after the hearing officer, it goes to city council. Hearing officer makes a, takes a written determination, then council either upholds that decision, overturns that decision, remands it back, or they can actually have a hearing at that moment. This case that they're proposing now is to remove that process of the hearing officer and have all petitions review go straight to city council.
Danny Collins with your planning commission staff. So staff reviewed the request and found it consistent with several policies in the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, particularly those related to streamlining the development review process and encouraging citizen participation. The proposed amendment would remove a layer of review directing all relevant petitions, petitions to the city council for final consideration. Staff also found that the amendment would continue to support and encourage citizen participation. Based on these considerations, the planning commission staff recommends that the proposed L D C text amendment related to section 27-61 to be found consistent with the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. We had no one sign up for the public comment on this one, so I'll turn it over to commissioners for questions. Yes, Commissioner Seben?
So I'll probably have the same comment on a lot of these, but as Mr. Cotton said, you know, the planning, the comprehensive plan states that everything that we pass should be consistent with state statute. And because I believe that a lot of these are more restrictive regulations, I will be voting that these are inconsistent because we need to be in compliance with state statute. And Senate Bill 180 said that we can't pass, we can't pass restrictions that are more restrictive than what we had in the past.
Thank you, Commissioner Seben. I did have a question about that. You had mentioned that we're taking our vote today and then it's going to a workshop. Legal's going to look at it before it gets to the city council for their final vote?
Dana's going to volunteer.
Sure. Dana Crosby, call your city attorney's office. We have been looking at all legislation passed by the city since August 1 of 2024, which is the retroactive date of Senate Bill 180, including this, this cycle of amendments and the July 2025 cycle. So we're going to, rather than bring this back for a first reading before city council with all this up in the air with Senate Bill 180, we're going to bring it to them in a workshop. We're going to explain Senate Bill 180. We're going to explain those policies. Because not everything in this packet is more restrictive or more burdensome. For example, this gives your, this takes a, an element out of the process, so they go directly to council. It's going to make it easier on our applicants. So we're going to look at each and every one, and we're going to talk to council about that when we bring it to the workshop. And then, once we have whittled this down to the final ordinance, we'll come back for first reading.
Okay. All right. Any other?
I just wanted to clarify, because I think I said it at the last meeting, that there was a policy in the plan about all development being consistent with state law. That's in the county's plan. It's not in the city's plan. So I just wanted to clarify that. The city's plan does not have that same policy language.
Commissioner Seben?
Just to confirm, so there's nothing in the comprehensive plan that says that we need to be in compliance with state law?
That is, Jennifer's looking.
Jennifer Malone, Planning Commission Staff, I am, I am looking, I think that it's in the back. Anything that would be referenced, I believe, would be in the legal status of the plan section in the back, but these are not policies. This is general information. And so I'm, I'm just giving this real, real quick. So if you just give me just a moment, I can give you a more concrete answer.
Thank you.
Looks like Tracy wants to...
Yeah, I think the, the most practical way of dealing with this is to approve whatever motion is made for consistency and make it subject to the determination by the city council about changes that need to be made so that the, so that the adoption, the ordinance adoption will be consistent with, with House Bill 180.
So just so I'm clear, we should add some language like that to each of the resolutions?
Yes.
That it's subject to Tampa City Council determining compliance with Senate Bill 180.
City's council is in agreement with that approach.
Okay. So, all right, we can, we can...
I take that for a yes.
Commissioner Seben?
The only amount of heartburn I have with that is that I don't believe that these are in compliance with Senate Bill 180. So even if they make the determination that they are, I still believe that they're more restrictive. So I'm not sure how we phrase it, given, at least my thought on it. Everybody else can have their own thoughts, but that's just my opinion.
The fact that the, I mean, I think there's two aspects to this. Number one, you're a recommending body as opposed to a final decision maker. But acknowledging that this adjustment needs to be made for compliance and from a practical side, in order to continue to process these amendments, which the city wants to, obviously wants to move forward with as quickly as possible because of the delays that they've experienced, I think satisfies that, that requirement.
But any planning commissioner who just, who could find and vote that they find something inconsistent with the plan?
Yes, of course.
It's just if, if there's a motion to that end, we need some policy backing for that. If there's a motion to find it inconsistent and we found it consistent, for example, then we, they would need policies.
Sorry, I wasn't quite sure where you were going. Absolutely. The, the practice of, of supporting your motion with goals, objectives, and policies in support of or in a finding of inconsistency doesn't change.
All right. Are there any other? Commissioner Linkus?
I guess I just kind of been listening to the conversation. I'm sympathetic to Commissioner Seben's concerns. And I, I think, Tracy, that your solution would be very effective. To me, I'm comfortable with that. And I just want to say that in reading about this legislation, there, I've seen reports, legal analysis that say this legislation does leave a lot of unclear, lack of clarity and gaps. And for me, especially something that removes a layer of burden for the public, like the one that we're, we're reviewing at the moment, is, I'd be very comfortable supporting that one. And I do think that, you know, kind of freezing, moving forward on things that support economic development, quality of life in light of this unclear legislation could be problematic as well. So I, I'm certainly sympathetic to your, your concerns, but I think that there are two sides to that story.
Commissioner Linkus? So were we, have we ever, let me ask you, Ms. Orne, I have a question, and it begs back to my original question about the timing of this thing, which Tracy's solution kind of resolves a little bit for me, but I'm still feeling a little uneasy that like, we're taking a vote now, then it's being workshopped and like, filled with a little, and then it's going for a reading. Like, is that a normal situation for us to have? Like us to, to give our recommendation going into a workshop for the boards that we serve?
Well, certainly, in, in any instance, you're, after your recommendation, city council could make changes.
Absolutely.
So, and I don't want to say that they've never had a workshop after your finding. I don't, typically, as, as was said, they go straight to first reading. I would imagine that if the amendment was altered significantly, it would need to come back for another consistency finding.
See, and that's my thing. I don't, you know me, electeds have their power, and I like to give them their power. I'm not, they can change whatever they want after. My concern is what am I voting on? If what I'm voting on is changing after I'm voting on it, then what am I voting on? You know, the idea is that we give a recommendation, they look at the recommendation. If they feel different, they have the authority to then make changes at the dais. I get that. But, you know, this, this seems a little bit weird to me. This is like, we're going in, we're knowing, we're voting for something that's very well possibly going to change, you know? And I mean, it's, it's kind of weird to me.
But I don't know that, and Dana, please correct me or add on to this. That the, that the intent of the workshop is not necessarily to wordsmith and change the amendments. It is to determine whether or not the amendments will move forward in the process.
I, I get that.
Yeah.
But I've been here long enough to understand that when the City of Tampa city council has a workshop, that some changes could theoretically, in a crazy world, occur. Okay? And that's, you know, that's my concern. I know it's out there. I know I'm being out there, but that...
No, you're right. It could. And I think if the substance of the Land Development Code amendment changed substantially, that would, they would need another consistency finding.
Who draws that substantial line?
Dana Crosby, call you from the city attorney's office. Generally, when we have something come back to council... come back to council, the actual substance, as Ms. Zornita said, doesn't really change. If it does change, then we go back to see what you approved, to see if that is not not me, but the staff of the city, to see if there's a significant change of how much we would have to bring back. And then we make our recommendation to council. This is a significant change. We would recommend this go back to planning commission. But in this case, what Ms. Zornita said is spot on. What we're doing is, we are, we were asked by our city council several months ago to bring this package to you for your recommendation and review. And now, something happened in the interim, and the law changed. And so now, this is a really odd place for everyone. So we have no choice but to continue on the path we were dispatched upon, and that's to come to you for a recommendation on this package. But when we take the package back to city council, if, and this is not a good this particular amendment is not a good example, but if there is an amendment in the package that staff believes is more burdensome and not consistent with Senate Bill 180, then our words to our council would be to recommend that we would draw this item from the packet at this time and bring it back after the 180 expires. It's still up to city council what they do decide to do. So that's how we were intending to bring this forward. That's why we asked them just to set it for a workshop instead of first reading, because we know that we may need to actually remove sections of this package. But we're not intending to wordsmith or change the language that they have blessed.
I got you. And I know you're not intending to. So the answer to the question is that City of Tampa staff, planning staff, makes the decision on what is substantial enough to request, that you guys make the final request for it to be brought back.
We make a recommendation to council, and then they make the decision.
So city council staff is the impetus of deciding that's substantial. Thank you.
We just make the recommendation.
Thank you.
Eric, do you want to add anything to that?
Oh, Commissioner Seaman, yes.
I actually have two questions. But since we had you up here, if you could answer a question for me, because this did come up in my briefing this week. So from what I understand, we passed, and it's sort of related to this, but a general question, we passed a version of the City of Tampa's Comprehensive Plan update. And from what I understand, when that goes before city council, so this is just, you know, a little bit of a tangent, but when that goes before city council, from what I understand, they can make a change like, you know, we voted to say that we didn't want a complete prohibition on applications to increase the density in the coastal high hazard area. Now, from what I understand, city council can decide that they don't care about that provision that we voted on, and they can change it to.
I'm not in the loop on what you're discussing. I'm familiar with the comp plan amendment. We have been working on that.
Right.
But I cannot answer your, I'm not the appropriate person to answer your question.
Well, my only question was, can they make a change like that unilaterally without it coming back for our vote? That was my question.
They can make, they do make changes to language. But as I said, if it's a significant change, then it comes back to the planning commission.
Okay. But my question, I guess, is who makes who makes the determination of whether or not that's a significant change?
We would give the recommendation to city council.
And and if it's something related to the Comprehensive Plan, planning commission staff would be a part of those discussions.
Okay.
And determining that. But it is ultimately the City of Tampa's Comprehensive Plan, so they make the final decision. In the county's in the county's comp plan update, for example, they changed policies and deleted things, deleted a whole goal of the future land use section that you all had voted on. I mean, that's that's their prerogative to do that.
Okay. And then the other question was this about this specifically, this amendment specifically. So it's being framed that this is making it easier for everyone because it skips a step. So would, just so I understand, so the way this works now, these applications go to the hearing officer, and then no matter what, go to city council after the fact?
So Dana Crosby, call you with the city attorney's office. 2761 currently is is a very is very, very, very broad. As an applicant, if you come in, and Eric can help me with this, if you come in for a formal decision, and you don't like the answer of staff, that under the code automatically goes to a hearing officer for a hearing, because there's there's volumes of information that must be considered. At that time, the recommendation goes to city council. If you have an issue with a finding it from the ARC or another board or a DE1 or something that staff does, the way the code is currently written, you have an option of taking your appeal directly to city council or taking your appeal to a hearing officer, after which time the hearing officer's recommendation comes back to be validated. So the code offers many avenues. The one that's solid that solidly goes to a hearing officer before it goes to council, and it goes to both, is the formal decision. And I don't know, do you want to add anything?
Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. What Dana was basically saying is correct. So normally, a zoning administrative determination goes to a hearing officer. That's usually 45 to 60 days out. Then after that, gets set for a public hearing before city council. That's usually another 45 to 60 days out. So this is trying to, by having it go straight to council, theoretically, we'd be removing about 60 days worth of waiting time before you actually get to a decision with a final decision.
Am I understanding correctly, though, that this removes the applicant's ability to choose whether it goes to the hearing officer or not?
That would be correct.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And this was a council-initiated amendment.
Right, right. So to me, that seems more restrictive if you're taking away someone's ability to choose as the applicant. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's not how we viewed it. But clearly, this is a very vague law, as the commissioner said, and there's just a lot of uncertainty about what over what does that really mean? More restrictive or burdensome? So everyone is, that's part of the problem. There are a lot of lawsuits being filed at this time over that very issue. So we are, I understand definitely, most things are debatable.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions, comments, or discussions from the commissioners on this one? All right, not seeing any, then I'll close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the commissioners on 27-61 review hearing. Commissioner Seaman?
I'd like to vote to find 27-61 review hearing from City of Tampa's Land Development Code text amendments inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan due to the
Policies, Goals, Objectives.
Policy of consistency with state statute, unless that's not specifically defined.
Yeah, we have not found any language that specifically says that in Tampa's plan. There are references in non-adopted sections to state statutes, but not nothing in a goal, objective, or policy that says that specifically. I mean, I think you could utilize the policies that were in the resolution about trying to reduce delays and provide certainty. That's Objective 8.16, and then Policy 8.16.1.
Okay, given 8.16 and 8.16.1.
All right. So we have a motion of inconsistency by Commissioner Seaman citing Objective 8.16, Policy 8.8.8. Objective 8.16, Policy 8.16.1. All right, inconsistency. Is there a second anywhere out that to that out there to that motion of inconsistency finding? I am not seeing any seconds out there, Commissioner Seaman. So the motion dies without a second, and I will open it back up to the commissioners for motions on this item. Anyone? Commissioner Linkus?
I just need to check. Was it 26.31?
Twenty.
This is my.
27-61.
Okay, I have too many notes here. I'll make a motion that 27-61 relative to the chapter text amendment is consistent with the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
All right. Motion, motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Linkus, second to that by Commissioner Kugler. Any questions, discussions from the commissioners before we take our vote? And I'm going to go ahead and send it over for a roll call vote on these.
And I just want to clarify that this is pending the language that that Tracy suggested being added to that.
Oh, yeah. We want to add the.
I'm going to suggest the
Motion maker.
broad language, subject to changes by city council for compliance with recent changes to state law.
Okay. All right. And that gets added to the motion, right? Are you amendable to that, Commissioner Linkus?
Please.
Okay. Are you okay with that, too, as a second to Commissioner Kugler? Okay. All right. So the motion of consistency with that language that Mrs. Zornita had just wrote down there, the maker of the motion was Commissioner Linkus, the second was Commissioner Kugler. Do you have a question? Are you just, you okay?
Shouldn't the language say something along the lines of that it be compliant with state law? He said that it be.
They said changes by Tampa City Council for compliance with
Oh, did he say compliant?
recent changes to state law. Yeah, yeah.
Essentially the same.
All right. Any more questions, discussions, clarifications from the commissioners? Not seeing any, then we'll turn it over to the roll call vote.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Kugler?
Yes.
Linkos?
Yes.
Seaman?
No.
Joseph?
No.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Seaman voted no.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa.
Commissioner Joseph.
I'm sorry, Chair Joseph.
Yeah. No, I voted no, yeah.
Motion carried five to two. Chair Joseph and Commissioner Seaman voted no.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next one, 27-150. Mr. Cotton?
Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. So this is a request also by city council. Currently, the way it works, if you have a planned development that gets denied by city council, you can petition the zoning administrator to waive the required 12-month wait period. And if you address the basis for the reasons for the denial, for instance, if you were denied because you were proposing to remove a grand tree, and you wanted a two-paced two-space parking reduction, now you're coming in, you've redeveloped your plan a little bit, and now you're saving the tree, and you've got all the required parking you need through a process that's codified, that would come to the zoning administrator, that individual within, look at the original plan, look at the proposed plan, and say, yes, you can now reapply. This proposal is to remove that ability of the zoning administrator and make anybody who, anytime there's a PD denied, require a 12-month waiting period, regardless of who the next applicant might, whether it's a new applicant or a different applicant.
Hang on. They got to finish their presentations. We're coming to you. Hang on.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins.
Danny Collins with your planning commission staff. Planning commission staff reviewed the request and found it inconsistent with several policies in the Comprehensive Plan, particularly those that are related to streamlining the development review process. LU Objective 8.1.6 directs the city to implement planning process improvements that reduce unnecessary project delays, while LU Policy 8.16.1 seeks to remove unnecessary requirements or delays in approval and permitting of residential development. By removing the zoning administrator's ability to waive the 12-month waiting period, the amendment may introduce additional delays in the development review process, potentially hindering the timely approval and permitting of residential projects. Based on these considerations, the planning commission staff recommends that the proposed LDC text amendment related to section 27-150 be found inconsistent with the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. All right. We didn't have anyone sign up in the public comment, so we will turn it over to commissioners. Commissioner Seaman?
It's, I can ask it later.
Okay. Any questions, discussions? I'm not seeing any. You sure you don't want to get it in there now? Because I'm about to close the public comment on this one. All right, public comment is closed, and I'll open it up to motions from the commissioners on this one. Anyone out there? Commissioner Seaman?
Motion to find City of Tampa Land Development Code text amendment 27-150 inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan.
All right. We got a motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Seaman. Is there a second out there? Commissioner Kugler? Oh, I'm giving it to Commissioner Bowden. You've been working pretty hard, Commissioner Kugler, so we give it to Commissioner Bowden this time. Motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Seaman, a second to that motion by Commissioner Bowden. Are there any questions or clarifications from the commissioners before we take our vote? I'm going to send it to a roll call vote, just in case.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Kugler?
Yes.
Linkos?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right. Sweet. Next up, D3, 27-156. Back over to you, Mr. Cotton.
Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. The next is a series, we're going to have a series of issues revolve revolving around parking, primarily for single-family residential uses. This request right here is a an amendment that went along with the next couple of amendments. This is cleanup in the code. Right now, the code, if you're a corner lot, you're only required to have a 10-foot driveway. Typical car, typical parking space in this city is 18 feet deep. Theoretically, if you're not parked in your garage, you would be parking into the public right of way. Excuse me, this, that's law. So you take, so that would remove it from, that would require side load garages to also have a minimum of an 18-foot setback for the length of the driveway. And then, so you wouldn't, if you're not in the garage, you wouldn't be parked in the public right of way. Thank you.
Did you want to, was this part of it, too? Did you want to talk about this?
I could.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't know this was going to pop up. They have to take it one by one.
Well, I thought this was the same amendment.
These three are all together.
Okay, to remove it that way? Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that was my mistake. So the next is just, this is just cleanup. Eric Cotton, again, from the City of Tampa, 23.10 talks about administrative waiver of parking. Yet somehow, in the midst of all that, there's a requirement that says you can do tandem parking in single-family detached and single-family attached design, which we allowed anyway. So this is just removing that from that section, because I don't know why it's in there. It's been in there since I started working at this city, but I don't have a reason for it to be there. So that's just a little bit of a cleanup when we were talking about parking as a whole. This is the new section of the code. This, I think, has once had probably most of the discussion regarding, but I've I've had with people on the on the development community, which is creating parking garage depths and sizes. Currently, that's not codified. This was, again, a council motion, which requires, if you're doing a one-car garage, it has to be 10 feet wide, two-car garage, 20 feet wide, and in either case, the garage has to be 22 feet deep. Now, this is only going to apply for, if you're if you're building a typical typical RS50, RS60, RS75 lot, your house is already back 20 to 25 feet. So your driveway is going to be in compliance with that requirement. On the other side, if you're doing a corner lot, based on the slide two previous slides, you're doing a quarter to corner yard, side load garage, you're already at 18 feet. So the only time this would be really applying to somebody is if you're coming in and you're doing a townhome development, and you only have a 10-foot setback, and your garage council would like to see the garage to be deeper than the typical, we don't have standards in there, but at least deeper than the typical 18 to 20 feet that most garages are developed in the city. When we had this discussion with city council, there are no waivers to this, either administratively through the ZA's office, or from the Verentia Review Board, or the BLC, or ARC, nor through city council through a PD approval. So if this is something that council wants, they would be, they would be, anybody who's coming in would be required to build to that size garage. And then the next one is, again, with accessory structures. This was also updating the graphics. Again, this is requiring an 18-foot setback for the structural edge of the garage back to the property line. Right now, in the code, it's 15 feet. So that would make it to be 18 feet. So again, if you're pulling in, you're, if you have an accessory structure, whether you're using it as a garage or not, your car would be off the off the off the out of the right of way, and be in compliance with the code. Now, keep in mind, nowhere in the City of Tampa are you required, I take that back, if you're doing a townhome development, there's requirements for enclosed garage spaces. But generally speaking, if you're building a single-family home, somebody detached, anywhere in the city, you're not required to build a garage. As long as you have the off-site parking, you can do it. A lot of people in seminal heists I've seen where they have, because they'll do a the single-family home, and next to it, they have a 36-foot long driveway, so they have their two tandem parking spaces, and they're compliant with code. I'll turn it over to Danny, or Jennifer, sorry.
Dana? Jennifer Malone, Planning Commission staff.
Jennifer Malone, Planning Commission Staff. Staff reviewed this with the comprehensive plan and found it was consistent, because the plan has specific policy language about implementing parking policies. They consider land use in context and providing that clear passageway for pedestrians. And if this code, if previously the code was not providing those provisions, then, and the comprehensive plan seeks that, or says that those things need to be provided, that there should be clear passage zones for pedestrians, and that we're looking at the land use and context of the surrounding area. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Ornita, hang on, let Miss Ornita-
So, that last provision about the accessory structures, the number for that one is not listed in our, in the, like, what was in here, like, what was in the amendment on the agenda? Yeah, it doesn't say twenty-seven-
Two ninety.
Two ninety, but I do see it in the language that was provided. I just wanna make sure that there's no issue that the fact that that section wasn't listed on our agenda, but it was, I do see it on page seven of ten of the agenda packet, is that section, twenty-seven two ninety. We just didn't leave, we did not put the, that section number in the agenda item title.
So are we okay voting on this?
I just wanna make sure, yeah, that's a Tracy question, I think.
I'm inclined to think that the fact that the section is included in the text is sufficient as a part of, of the notice. It certainly would have been better if it were included in the, in the summary, but it is clearly, you know, included in the text.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir, okay. Now, as I was saying, no one signed up for the public comment on this one, so I will turn it over to the commissioners, Commissioner Seben?
So we talked about this one last time, but I just wanted to give a couple more thoughts. I think that making a requirement of internal dimensions of someone's single-family home is burdensome and an overreach, and just for example, a Volkswagen Tiguan is fifteen feet long. The requirement here is that the length of the garage be twenty-two feet long. If you multiply those extra seven feet by the twenty feet of width that these garages are required to be, and you multiply that times two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a square foot, which is probably the average of a single-family home right now, maybe on the low end, that's an additional thirty-five thousand dollars worth of cost that we're burdening homeowners and home builders with, and just increasing the price of housing in the City of Tampa. In addition to that, I don't think that, that tandem parking should, you know, on a single-family residence should not be allowed to count towards parking, I don't know where the logic is there, but those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Seben. Yes, Commissioner Cardenas?
Yeah, I'm kind of in the same thought process in reference to that twenty-two feet for the, for the depth of the parking garage. You know, some lots are just not conducive, and they just don't have the space, you know, and it's like you're, as it is sometimes, we're trying to fit stuff somewhere. I think the tandem was mainly, I think it allows it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Did you wanna make-
Eric Cotton, City of Tampa, yes, yes, sir. Tandem parking's allowed in the city. We're not taking that away from anybody's ability to do tandem parking. It's just where it's located right now in the code is under administrative variance of required parking spaces, and it's just not in the correct spot. But tandem parking would still be allowed, again, the garage issue only applies if you're building a garage and if you can't comply with parking standards outside of that garage. So if you have a, if you have your typical RS sixty or RS seventy-five lot, you're already at twenty-five feet, so this wouldn't, this wouldn't apply because your, your two required parking spaces are in the driveway. It's only if you don't have that, that driveway parking that this would, that this language would kick in.
All right, Commissioner Seben?
So, when I read D, tandem parking of the required spaces inside of a residential single-family garage or carport shall be prohibited.
Of that portion? That was, that was inside the garage, that was something that council did not, council wanted to prohibit inside tandem parking inside of a garage.
Why is that?
That was a motion from city council, I don't have the reason for that, I don't know.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Kugler?
Yes, thank you. I, I was present at one discussion about, and I believe it was one of our neighborhood representatives had given a bunch of examples of garages, but they couldn't get out of their car. They basically had to climb out the window, because you couldn't open the door. I think that was a design issue that she brought up, but I do know that, and I agree with you, Commissioner Seben, that people should have a right to their property, how they use it. Unfortunately, the, the public space, the sidewalks are blocked many, many times, and I could, I could bring in a whole photo album of them being blocked by attached trailers, attached utility trailers, and extra-long vehicles that don't fit that particular place. People sometimes buy houses, I think, without figuring out those details.
All right, good comments, I'm coming to you, you can go to Commissioner Bowden, then I'll come back to you.
Just, I think what I heard you say, that, that requirement becomes, it's more an exception than the normal rule based on the lot.
Eric Cotton, City of Tampa, yes, that would be correct. If you're, if you're providing, again, if you're, most zoning districts in the city are twenty or twenty-five feet back to begin with, so if you're already, your house is already back twenty feet, then this wouldn't kick in, because your required parking would be in your driveway, your two required parking spaces. So you wouldn't have, this wouldn't, this wouldn't affect you.
All right, let me get Commissioner Kress first, and then I'll come back to you, and then get Commissioner Linkus.
Yeah, good discussion, and, you know, I understand that this might apply to a fairly narrow section of the code. My general concern is that I don't think we should be requiring parking, really, at all. I know it's kind of a radical thing, but I just wonder what kind of unintended consequences this is, and while I appreciate, and it also is a major pet pee when vehicles are blocking the sidewalk, that feels like an enforcement issue to me, not requiring more room, more buildable room for driveways and garages and carports, and I don't get the tandem thing at all. I do tandem parking at my house in the garage, and-
Careful.
What's your address?
It's a carport, does that count? Yeah, so-
Yeah, there's one.
I mean, I could go on, but I just, I don't get this one.
Thank you, Commissioner Kress, Commissioner Seben?
I had mentioned it last time, but I just wanted to comment, you know, I have an eighteen-foot garage, and I fit my car just fine in cars, and so I think if you have, you know, a Ford F three fifty or whatever, it might be hard, but I don't know that everybody has one of those, and those people who are buying or building houses should probably consider that when they consider their own garage dimensions, because this is a choice kind of thing, it seems like.
Commissioner Linkus? Nope. Are there any other comments, thoughts, discussion from the commissioners before I go ahead and close the public comment on this one? All right, not seeing any, then I will close the public comment on this one, remind everyone that staff found this one consistent, and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this one. Commissioner Seben?
I'd like to vote to find City of Tampa Land Development Code text amendments twenty-seven dash one fifty-seven, twenty-seven dash two eighty-three point one zero, and twenty-seven dash twenty, two eighty-three point one seven inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, given-
Objective eight point one six and Policy eight point sixteen point one?
Exactly.
All right, and I'm-
Is that the one that's missing?
Yeah, I'm gonna add in twenty-seven dash ninety, and also Table four dash two, you skipped over, but-
And that as well.
Right. It's all part of the same one, so, yeah.
A second, did you get a second?
All right, nope, still open for a second, all right, we have a second to that inconsistency finding, inconsistency motion, sorry, by Commissioner Kress. So we have a motion of inconsistency finding citing Objective eight point sixteen, Policy eight point sixteen point one, a second to that inconsistency finding by Commissioner Kress. Any questions, discussions, or clarifications needed by the commissioners before we take our vote, and I'm gonna send it over for a roll call vote on this one.
Bowden?
No.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress? Kugler?
No.
Linkos? Seben? Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried four to three, Commissioner Bowden, Kugler, and Linkos voted no.
All righty, thank you very much. Next up, we have D four, twenty-seven dash forty-three, and twenty-seven dash two eleven, Seminole Heights Build to Line. Send it back to you, Mr. Cotton.
Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. Currently in Seminole Heights, the city uses a build-to line, unfortunately, it's not, it's not, when we adopted the Seminole Heights regulations, we did not define what a BTL or a build-to line was. This is incorporating, that is just actually now defining what that is in the code, which you can read, so I'm not gonna say it out loud. And then, this is the language we're adding into the code, this is for the SHRS, which is residential single-family, the single-family attached, residential multifamily, and residential office within Seminole Heights. Basically, how you determine the BTL, from the property line back, and if what's on either side of you, the average of the property is on either side, if it's vacant property, RS fifty is the most equivalent zoning district to the RS districts when it comes to size and dimensional requirements. So we each said, if you're gonna be that, you'll be at twenty feet. So that's just a summary of what that, that amendment's for. Do you have any questions?
No, you can go on to the other one, oh, that was the last one, okay.
That was the second slide, yes, sir.
All right, no one signed up for the public comment on, oh, oh, yeah, we need our finding from staff.
Thank you. Quinn Steele, Planning Commission Staff. Planning Commission Staff finds the amendment supports many of the goals, objectives, and policies in the comprehensive plan related to streamlining the development review process and maintaining codes that are responsive to Tampa's evolving needs, preserving historic character by reinforcing historically referenced building placements, particularly in the Seminole Heights local historic district, and lastly, it promotes compatible infill development by relating new buildings to the surrounding development pattern. With that, Planning Commission Staff recommends the proposed amendment related to the Seminole Heights Build to Line consistent with the comprehensive plan. That concludes my presentation and available for any questions.
Thank you, we had no one sign up for the public comment on this one, so I'll turn it over to the commissioners. Questions, comments, discussions? Not seeing any at this time, then I will go ahead and close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Is there anyone out there, Commissioner Linkus?
I'll make a motion that twenty-seven two eleven is consistent with the city plan.
All right, is there a second? All right, Commissioner, did you have something to say, Trace?
I was just gonna suggest that you include the language we discussed earlier.
Oh, yeah.
Including the language that was discussed earlier.
It would be subject to any changes made by city council for compliance with recent changes in state law.
All right.
Part of the motion.
All right, are you amenable to that, all right? Second by, second to that motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kugler, all right, so that's a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Linkus citing that language that Mr. Ornita's gonna take care of for us, and a second to that motion by Commissioner Kugler. Any questions, discussions from the commissioners before we take our vote on this consistency? I'm not seeing any, then I will send it over to the clerk for our roll call.
Bowden?
Yes.
Buzza? I'm sorry. Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress? Kugler?
Yes.
Linkos? Seben? Joseph?
No.
Motion carried six to one, Chair Joseph voted no.
Thank you, all right. Next up, we have D five, twenty-seven dash sixty, alternative designs, and back to you, Mr. Cotton.
Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. So, in the code right now, we have two different kinds of design exceptions, we have a one and a two, with different standards for each one. This is trying to, depending, it depends upon where you are in the city. If you're in East Tampa, you have a certain standard, if you're in South Tampa, you have a different standard. If you're an overlay district, you go through a DE one that doesn't have standards, per se, it doesn't have maximums or minimums, what you can ask for. So what we're consolidating this is to have just one design exception citywide, and codifying what the maximums you can request. If you're requesting more than this, then you're required to go to a, in general zoning, you'd go to the variance review board, if you're one of the overlay, one of the special districts like Ebor, or the ARC, you'd go to the BLC, or the AR, or the ARC, if you're in, like, in Hyde Park, or one of the historic districts. So what that's doing is just creating the standards that are be, that would be consistent across the board throughout the city. The biggest issue is, um, this was a motion from council to increase the notice period from fifteen days to thirty. Right now, it's fifteen days, council wanted it to be thirty days. And, turn it over to the Planning Commission.
Good afternoon, Megan McCarthy, Planning Commission Staff, presenting LDC Amendment twenty-seven sixty concerning alternative designs. Planning Commission Staff recommends the proposed amendment related to alternative designs be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa comprehensive plan, including encouraging citizens to attend public meetings, encouraging sensitive planning and design standards, and emphasizing the streamline, streamlining of the development review process, and maintaining codes that are responsive to Tampa's evolving needs. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, all right. We didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment on this one either, so I will turn it over to the commissioners for questions, comments, discussions. Commissioner Seben?
Same comments as before, just that the timeline change, I think, would be considered more restrictive, and for that reason, I'll be voting against it.
All right, any other comments, questions, discussion items from the commissioners? I'm not seeing a lot of excitement, so I will close the public comment and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this one. Is there anybody out there? Commissioner Linkus?
I'll make a motion that twenty-seven sixty is consistent with the City of Tampa comprehensive plan.
All right, that's a motion of consistency citing that special language that Miss Ornita is taking down for us, yes, okay. It's a motion of consistency citing that language, and a second to that motion by Commissioner Kugler. Are there any questions, comments, or discussions from the commissioner on that consistency motion? Not seeing any, then I will turn it over to the clerk for our roll call vote.
Bowden?
No.
Cardenas?
No.
Kress? I'm sorry? Kugler?
Yes.
Linkos? Seben? Chair Joseph?
No.
Motion failed, three to four.
All right, we'll reopen it up-
Bowden, Cardenas, Seben, and Joseph voted no.
Thank you. Reopen it up for motions, Commissioner Seben?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to find, we're on twenty-seven dash seven one, correct?
Twenty-seven dash sixty.
Sixty, I'm sorry. City of Tampa's Land Development Code text amendment twenty-seven dash sixty, alternative designs inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, given eight point one-
Eight point sixteen and eight point sixteen point one.
Correct.
All right, that's a motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Seben citing Objective eight point sixteen and Policy eight point sixteen point one. Is there a second to that motion anywhere out there? All right, second by Commissioner Bowden. Are there any comments, questions, or discussions on that inconsistency motion before we take our roll call vote? Not seeing any, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas? Kress? Kugler?
No.
Linkos?
No.
Seben? Chair Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried four to three, Commissioner Kress, Kugler, and Linkos voted no.
All righty, on to the next item, well, there's a lot of them. D six, twenty-seven dash seventy-one, back to you, Mr. Cotton.
Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. Section twenty-seven seventy-one is a new code requirement. This will help the city come into compliance with Senate Bill ten eighty, which this is now creating standards, currently in the code, there are no codified standards for site plans for variances, special uses, and design exceptions. This is going to codify what's, what the minimum requirements are for someone to apply for one of those. You know, in North Arrow, a site, site data table- You know, in North Arrow, a site, site data table, our recommendation to most people when they do apply for these is to take their survey, make a copy of it, and utilize the survey as their site plan and draw on and just add certain comments on. This is what this is proposing to do. So we'll have basically codified standards for this require, for those kinds of applications. Thank you. Question?
From staff.
Megan McCarthy, Planning Commission Staff. Next is the LDC Amendment twenty-seven seventy-one concerning site plan requirements. Planning Commission Staff recommends the proposed amendment related to site plan requirements be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, including standardizing application review and emphasizing the streamlining of development review processes and maintaining codes that are responsive to Tampa's evolving needs. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. We didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment, so over to the commissioners. Commissioner Seben?
Mr. Cotton, is this, does this require any specifics, I guess, other than just a list of what you need in order to apply? Or am I misunderstanding this?
All these requirements require, all these applications require site plans?
Right.
So this is basically saying, on your site plan, you need to show this at a minimum. You need to provide us this information. Right now, we don't have it in there, and we'll get all types of applications that some are better than others when it comes to reviewing the site plan. Then we have to keep going back, keep going back and asking for information to, clarification on what they're actually requesting. This is an attempt to preempt that and to say, this is what's required to be submitted. Please submit this when you actually apply for it.
So just, so I understand, okay, so this, for example, says the location of existing wetlands, if applicable. Would someone need a wetland delineation survey then, in addition now, in order to make this application?
That's currently required by code if they're going to be encroaching into the wetland setback.
Well, but so, you know, do I, if I'm just a landowner and I don't know if it's wetlands or not, is this a new standard whereby I would need a wetland?
No, we would, currently, we require people to go and contact EPC to make a, to get a wetland delineation.
Does everybody need to contact EPC to go to wetland delineation for every project?
If there's wetlands on their property or appear to be wetlands on their property, yes.
So I guess the standard is, what do you, what do you think a wetland, what should the common person believe a wetland to be? I guess, just a wet something?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's certain requirements, and I don't, I would not be, when something like this comes through and there might be a wetland, we use our natural resources team to look at aerials and to have that discussion with the applicant.
Okay, but now every applicant needs, I guess my question is, so everybody needs a wetland delineation survey? If it goes through the city and you guys determine that there is a wetland on site, then everyone in that case would need a wetland delineation survey, correct?
Correct, that's required as of today. They would still be required to do that.
Okay, and so, as it will be in the future, they just need to locate those wetlands on this plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Commissioner Cardenas?
You know, my concern with this is just that we have citizens in the county and in the city that, you know, they, they don't, they don't have the means that everybody else has. And, you know, if somebody is, actually, I don't even think I need to specify an age, but they, if they had their survey and they could print their survey out and they could draw on their survey and add what's needed on their survey to describe what it is that they want to complete, is this gonna require, is this gonna make it to a level where they're gonna need to go find a, you know, a draftsman or an architect to do this for them? Or can they do, can they, or will they be able to add this stuff to their survey for them to be able to process a permit?
They would be able to add this to their survey. When they get to permitting, they're gonna have to have engineer drawings, engineering drawings drawn up to submit for their, for their building permit, but at this stage, they could, they could add it on themselves.
Okay, I mean, not in every instance, I mean, because I've done it myself. So, you know, I didn't have to have engineered drawings, but I was able to go about a survey and go about it in exactly this format. So will this now be requiring them to have engineered drawings?
No, sir, not at the, not at the stage of an application.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right, we'll get Commissioner Bowden, and I'll come back to you.
Yeah, these new requirements, are they already in place?
Dana Crosby, call you from the City Attorney's Office. In the past session, a bill passed, Senate Bill ten eighty, and in that bill, it set tighter timeframes for our review of things that come through the door like an application. And so, we're required now, these are all required, if you come in and pick up an application, this list will be there and you have to fill those requirements when you apply. But the statute now requires us to codify the requirements for our applications in our code, so that they're in the code.
Understand, but if, if today, if I put in an application, do, you give me a list of what is required? So it's already in place, that's my question? Yes, sir, it's on the application, it's just not codified. Okay, so it is, okay, all right, thanks.
Commissioner Seben?
I just wanted to comment on what Commissioner Cardenas had mentioned. You know, I've worked in real estate my entire career, and I couldn't draw something to scale with one inch equals ten feet drawing on my own without hiring someone. So I just wanted to make that comment.
All right, Commissioner Kugler?
Yes, thank you. If I was reviewing many, many applications, I certainly would prefer it to be consistent. Is, is it required that that, that those, those applications that are difficult to go through and review, are they, is there a process that they are put aside? Are they treated differently because they're difficult to, in other words, I think what, what they're looking for is consistent language throughout the, the application process. And if, if people are submitting sketches, things like that, that are difficult to interpret, what's the process? Do they just send it back to the applicant to get it better?
We contact the applicant, tell them they need to update their site plan to be in conformance with what's currently required in the application.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, a little bit of a concern I have just is, we're here to serve the citizens of the, you know, the city and the county. So, you know, one of the things that I love about the city and the county is that they do that. When we go into the permit department or whatever department it may be, that our staff is very, very good at providing assistance. So if a gentleman had to do something on their property and they needed assistance to arrive at having these things added on their, their version of a survey that he can have created into a site plan, will city employees be able to help them?
Staff would be able to guide the individual, the staff can't support the individual. They can, they can guide them to it, you know, certain things on here, computation of total acreage on the site, you know, that's, you know, if your lot's seventy-five by one-twenty, you know, we could help with that kind of stuff, but we can't actually update their plan to reflect that. We would tell them, this is what you need to put on there, this is the math, but we can't do it for them.
So they can help them.
Commissioner Cardenas? Are there any questions, comments, or discussion items, clarifications needed? Not seeing any, then I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this one.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Kugler?
Yes.
Lenkos?
Yes.
Seben?
No.
Chair Joseph?
No.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioner Seben and Chair Joseph voted no.
Thank you, all right. Next up, we have, I keep forgetting the letter, D seven, twenty-seven dash one eighteen, approvals by the ARC Administrator. Back to you, Mr. Cotton.
Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. This is just cleaning up language in the code. When the ARC Administrator makes a determination, instead of having that go to city council, it would go to the ARC itself. This is consistent with what's the language that's in the Barrio Latino Commission's codes, which is, when the BLC Administrator makes a determination, that appeal goes to the BLC, BLC itself not jumping up to city council. Oh, okay. Is the Architecture Review Commission. That deals with all historic districts that are not part of Ebor City, which goes under the Barrio Latino Commission. So right now, the Barrio Latino Commission Administrator makes a decision, the BLC, the Barrio actually hears that appeal of that individual's decision. Right now, so that would be the same for across the board if you're in Hyde Park. You get a determination by the ARC Administrator, that would be appealed to the ARC itself.
I'm waiting for staff to do their thing.
Jennifer Mullin, Planning Commission Staff. I thought that was an important distinction to make, so thank you for letting Eric explain that further. I know we use a lot of acronyms in this field. So Planning Commission Staff did find this consistent with the comprehensive plan because the comprehensive plan actually speaks about the Architectural Review Commission and its importance as subject matter experts. They are a group appointed by Tampa City Council, and it's important for them to be reviewing these things. And it would also ensure that the development review would focus on the appropriate design and form of the surrounding area. So that's our finding, and I appreciate your time.
All right, we didn't have anyone sign up in the public comments. I'll turn it over to commissioners. Commissioner Seben?
I'm just having a hard time from reading the crossed out language and the underlined language coming to that same conclusion. Is it, so maybe, I guess I'm asking for more of an explanation of what exactly it is that we're changing?
What is my language? Dana Crosby, call you from the City Attorney's Office. I represent ARC and the BLC. And I did, this is language that we requested at the ARC. It does not add an extra step, it, it will. The administrator. Pretty general things, for example, you live in Hyde Park, you have a shingle roof, you want to replace it with a shingle roof. The ARC Administrator can, can sign off on that. Part of a roof and you want to. To a shingle roof, ARC for them to, that. If ARC Administrator know, he, it's really beyond his authority. But if he were to. Should. He'll. That's. Should go to the ARC and not. We. Are. To. Council.
End up two motions from the commissioners.
Land Development Code, Amendment twenty-seven. Approval for the ARC Administrator as consistent.
All right, we have a motion of consistency finding citing Ms. Ornita's special language. Commissioner Bowden? Is that amenable, okay, all right. And that second's also citing that? All right, second by Commissioner Kugler. Motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Bowden citing that language. Are there any questions or comments?
Bowden? Cardenas? Kress?
Yes.
Lenkos? Seben?
No.
The one. The vote no.
Right, next up, we have D eight, seven dash one thirty-two, special criteria.
City of Tampa. I don't know if y'all recall, probably about two years ago, we came. Language for accessory units. It could be Tampa, Seminole Heights, and parts around Lowry Park. You can have an accessory dwelling unit either by right or through a special use process. And previously to that amendment, if you had a non-conforming structure, you had a garage that was built in nineteen forty-eight, you wanted to convert over to a dwelling unit, and it was a foot and a half from the property line, code requires it to be three feet, we would administratively deny the request out of probably a hundred, hundred fifty, out of probably a hundred, hundred fifty times we've been before them. So it makes sense, based on the past record of what city council did, to just remove that requirement from the code and allow non-conforming structures to be used as extended family residences.
Quinn Steele, again, Planning Commission Staff. The Planning Commission Staff finds the amendment supports many goals, objectives, and policies in the comprehensive plan related to streamlining the development review process and maintaining codes that are responsive to Tampa's evolving needs, supporting extended family residences by allowing more flexible living arrangements. And lastly, the amendment expands housing opportunities by supporting infill development, producing housing diversity and aligning with the plan's compact city form strategy. With that, Planning Commission Staff recommends the proposed amendment related to the special use criteria be found consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, we didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment for this one, so over to the commissioners. I'm gonna start off with you, Cardenas.
So, I get what you guys are doing, so it doesn't have to go to city council, but if it's not approved by, if you guys deny it, does the applicant still have the option to go to city council?
If it's denied for a different reason than the non-conforming structure issue, yes, they could always go. For instance, if the property is not homesteaded. They could, somebody could still apply and go to city council on an appeal for that.
But if it's denied because they want to do the extended family residence and you guys said no, could they appeal to city council?
Yes, as long as for those other criteria, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Seben?
What was the thought process behind requiring the property to be homesteaded and requiring the owners to do an annual affidavit?
Homesteaded is, because it's, it's, that's always been in the code, going back into the previous chapter forty-three, so it's been in the code for quite a long time. We're just carrying that forward, I think, is to avoid having two rental properties or the ability, I shouldn't say that, because the other one should not be rented, but it was so, the homeowner would be the one asking for the request versus it being a rental property asking for the request. That's where that came from. The special use permit renewed annually, when you're coming in for an extended family, it's specific for a person. My example is for my mom. My mom's gonna live there. When my mom has to go to a more advanced care or she passes away or for whatever reason she's not there, it wasn't, it's meant so that dwelling that's there goes away. It's a temporary in nature. So every year, we send out an affidavit, person reviews it, we ask who's living there, make sure it's the same person who was approved. If they're not, and they move somebody else in, it was, it was for my mom, now it's my brother-in-law, for whatever reason, he's living with me. He would, I would have to update that special use and get a new special use. As long as it's still a relative, he could continue to live there. I think the goal is to avoid having it become a rental.
Okay, I understand that. My thought process was, when I saw the homesteaded part, okay, imagine, and I think this is actually pretty common in Tampa, you have a house in Tampa and you have, you know, another residence in another state, for example, and you're a snowbird. If your property here is not homesteaded, then you wouldn't be able to, you know, say your property in Colorado or something for some other reason needed to be homesteaded, you wouldn't be able to get this special use the way it's currently written, correct?
Administratively, we couldn't approve it. But we've had examples where people go to city council on an appeal. We just had one, a lady lived on an appeal. She presented the same evidence, we said it's not homesteaded, the council said, okay, and they still approved it. But that's up to city council.
So this language is adding that extra layer?
That language is currently in the code now.
Yeah, I, I think it's important to point out that the current language.
Is owner occupied.
Requires that the main residence is owner occupied. So I think that one of the things this is changing is, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, is that the property has to be homesteaded, so it could be the back parcel or the back unit that could be the home sit. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's the main structure that has to be.
Well, the property as a whole is homesteaded.
Right.
Previously, which we've changed here.
Where the person lives.
Is, the property starts to be homesteaded, but previously, it was, the main house had to be the person who lived there and the accessory, the extended dwelling is where the person would have to reside, the in-law or the mom or whatever. This is now saying, my mother and father live in the main house, they're getting into their seventies and eighties, I'm twenty-five, I'm gonna move back home, I'm gonna live in the back unit so I can still take care of them. That's why we changed the language on that.
I understand that. So my thought process was, okay, I have a house in Colorado and I have a house in Tampa, okay? And I occupy that house six months or eight or nine months out of the year, and I don't occupy that house, you know, for the remainder of that time. And right now, as it's written, the main residence is owner occupied, that I would fulfill this requirement. But if my house in Colorado was the homesteaded one and not the one in Tampa, then I would fail this standard and then I would have to go to city council, correct?
Correct, you'd have to appeal that decision.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kress?
Well, first off, it's really sweet to have your mom move into your property.
No, she's not, don't worry.
So I think I heard you say this would be citywide allowance?
Correct, extended family residents are citywide right now.
Pardon?
They're citywide right now.
Yeah, okay, and you can't charge rent?
That's correct.
And this is really only because the rest of our city isn't ready for ADUs, and this is one way to get more housing?
Well, this has been in the code probably for 50 years. This predates the ADU section of the code.
But if the ADUs were available citywide?
Extended everywhere, then we probably would. The only difference between an extended family and an ADU, if they're both allowed citywide eventually, is ADUs are taxed differently from the property appraiser, because they're income generating, where an extended family's not.
I see.
So people would still probably want that ability to have one versus the other.
Right, right. Okay. Just want to make sure I understood the distinction. I'm supportive of this. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Seaman?
Sorry, just to go back to what Commissioner Kress was saying, so this changes the standard from they may not pay rent to they shall not pay rent. So what if I wanted my brother-in-law to pay rent, I can't ask him to pay rent if I want him to live in the back?
Officially, he could not pay rent.
All right. I did have a quick question myself. Livable area, 600 square feet?
Yes, sir.
What is, what is livable area? Is that air-conditioned square footage, or is that entire square footage?
That's the, doesn't include porches, so if you build a, you know, that's your bathroom, your kitchen.
Air-conditioned square footage?
Where you're, where you're actually living, especially this time of year.
Is the un-air-conditioned square footage unlimited? I noticed that you capped the air-conditioned, so does that mean, as long as it's not air-conditioned, they can go nuts?
No, because, so extended families can either be in a house, or they can be in accessory structure.
Right.
If they're in an accessory structure, that's capped, that square footage is capped through other portions of the code.
Okay.
Under 2017-290, that limits total square footage allowed, yes.
Okay. Total square footage of the entire structure, or again, is this livable versus, or air-conditioned?
It doesn't differentiate. It's accessory structures, let's say 750 square feet, you could have 600 air-conditioned, and then 150 would be shed or whatever.
Whatever. Gotcha. Okay, cool. All right. Commissioner Kugler?
Thank you. Could, is the main point of this to really streamline, is that what it's all about? Because it doesn't look, you know, you say these things have been going back in time for quite a bit, a lot of these.
Well, the goal is to avoid the requirement of somebody who has a non-conforming garage or accessory structure on their building having to go to City Council on an appeal.
Okay, thank you.
Because then, again, that adds 30 to 45 days typically, to, by the time the denial would come out, because you don't meet that section of the code, to get in front of City Council.
So the officer can take care of it right there, is the idea?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Kress?
Sorry, just one more. I don't have it up in front of me, but are parking requirements changing or addressed as part of this?
Extended families don't require parking.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions or discussion items from the commissioners on this one? I am not seeing any, so I will go on ahead and close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this one. Are there any motions anywhere out there? Anyone? Somebody's gotta do it. Oh, Commissioner Linkus.
I'll make a motion that's, text amendment 27-132. Yes. Be found consistent with the, it's consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, including the language that Ms. Ornita has.
All right.
A second.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding citing the language. A second to that motion by Commissioner Bowden. Are there any questions, clarifications, comments from the commissioners before we take our vote? Send it over to the clerk for roll call.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Kugler?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Seaman?
No.
Chair Joseph?
No.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioner Seaman and Chair Joseph voted no.
All right. Next up, we have D-927-156, and it's back to Mr. Cotton.
Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. So 27-156, Table 4-2, footnote seven, is under the dimensional requirements. So that portion of the code right now allows setback adjustments by right, if you are preserving a grand tree or a specimen tree. In the rear, I think you get 40% of a reduction, the front 25, and the size up to a foot. We're taking the right out of the code and allowing people to go before, as a design exception or a variance, to modify those requirements. What we've had, the experience of people who have lots that are zoned, single-family, they're 60 by 110, there's a tree in the very back corner of the lot, they're not taking out, they're not within the protective radius of the tree, but they say, we're preserving this tree, so now they want to reduce their front yard by, from 25 down to 17, or 18, whatever that percentage would be. So this is removing that ability. Instead of just having it by right, they would have to actually justify the request. So that's the synopsis of this, of this issue, this amendment.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff. We, staff did find this consistent with the comprehensive plan based off of, it streamlines the development review process, and it keeps up with the changing needs and trends of Tampa's neighborhoods, and it also maintains minimal setbacks, building heights and recesses with the comparable range in street trees to provide a sense of vertical enclosure on streets. But if you have any questions?
Thank you. All right. We didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment on this one. Commissioner Linkus, is that a comment or from leftovers? Okay, leftovers. So I will send it over to the commissioners for questions, comments, discussions on this one. I did have a quick, just general, oh, Commissioner Seaman, there, sorry.
My only comment is, removing this ability by right sounds more restrictive to me, so for that reason, I will be voting against it.
Well, that's my question, so I'd like a response to it. It seems, you know, that you're removing a by-right feature. How can that not be more restrictive if you're removing rights? I don't understand that. It seems weird to me.
Eric Cotton, Development Coordination. This language was one, was drafted and transmitted prior to Senate Bill 180, so it does have to come before the Planning Commission. And, you know, again, we're having that workshop in September, where City Council will, will be discussing this with council. I understand where the Planning Commission's coming from on some of these issues, but again, that final decision will be worked through at the workshop.
Very well. Are there any more comments? Commissioner Cardenas?
Yeah, I do have a question in reference to, you kind of gave an example before, if they have a tree in the back corner. Can you go through that real quick again?
So we've had people come in, and they have a deeper lot. So RS60 zoning lot, minimum lot size is basically 60 by 100. They have an oversized lot, it's 60 by 120. Tree in the back, back corner, the required protective radius for a tree is 20 feet, for, let's say, a grand, grand oak. So they're already meeting that requirement through their setback anyway. But now they're, now they'll come in, we'll have developers that come in and say, well, hey, you know, I'm protecting this tree in the back, I get to use this section to increase my setback in the front. Now they're adding in another X number of square feet. But they're, what they're preserving was going to be preserved anyway, because it met, it was already meeting that requirement because of the required setbacks.
Yeah, I guess my question is, is that they still have that 20 feet in the backside, right? So let's say they had something else that they wanted to put in there, well, they can't. Maybe they had an ADU that they wanted to put in the back, but because of those 20 feet, they can't, for example. I mean, in that case, in that type of situation, this would, the way it is, would work, because then they could move up on the front side.
True, that's correct.
So in a situation like that, something like this would?
Correct.
Would help them?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Commissioner Seaman?
My comment, I guess, is to, so we had, I think we had this conversation last time where these, we had talked about how these things that were in conflict with the statute might not be coming before us, and I mean, I don't know if I'm just like echoing what Commissioner Joseph had said previously, but why are they coming before us, I guess? If these standards haven't been worked out, why isn't this being pushed until they are worked out?
Dana Crosby, call you from the City Attorney's Office. When we were here a month ago, we had the package that you, that's before you today. We have no power, and I mentioned this last month, as staff, to remove items that the City Council has transmitted for approval. We have to take it back to them in order for them to make changes to their requested changes to the code, or at least the changes to the code that they dispatched us to bring to you. The law changed on June 26 of this year. That was a couple of months ago. These have been in the works since last July. They're, they, we are in no position to pull them off. And as I mentioned a month ago, and I'll mention again, we will go to council, and we will tell them what we believe is now contrary to the brand-new law that just was signed by the governor, but we have no authority not to bring them to you.
So, just so I understand, the City Attorney's Office has no power to remove anything from?
Transmitted packet by council? No, absolutely not.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions, comments, discussion items from the commissioners on this one? I'm not seeing a lot of excitement, so I will go on ahead and close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Again, a consistency finding by staff. Oh, Commissioner Seaman, sorry.
I'll make a motion to find 27-156, Table 4.2, elimination of footnote seven inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, given policy 8.16 and 8.16.
All right. All right. We have an inconsistency motion by Commissioner Seaman citing objective 8.16 and policy 8.16.1. A second to that motion by Commissioner Cardenas. Are there any questions, comments, clarifications, or discussions needed from the commissioners before we vote? Then I'll ask our clerk to do a roll call.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
No. I'm sorry, yes.
Kress?
No.
Kugler?
No.
Linkus?
No.
Seaman?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioner Kress, Kugler, and Linkus voted no.
All right, very good. Next up, we have item D-1027-284, 2.5, arborist report for any tree removal. Back to you, Mr. Cotton.
Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. This is a clarification initiated by Natural Resources staff. So when somebody's coming in to remove a grand tree, they're required to have an arborist report anyways, one of the requirements of the code. What prompted this is, when, when they're looking at it, instead of relying on, basically what this is asking, to utilize that arborist report to determine location of limbs and the impact of tree, of new construction on that property. Currently, under like a number six on here, the corners of the lot have, where that building has to be staked out, and then our arborists go out there and take a look at it. This is removing that requirement unless it's asked for. Again, we would be relying upon the professional that that individual hires to look at their trees, to make that determination, and grade the trees, and show where the limbs are, and what that impact on the trees would be, where their buildable area is going to end up being at. So this is just putting the burden, the, are the, arborists would be the one going out there and making that call, you know, these limbs are in conflict, our arborists would then review that report, perhaps with that individual, and make that decision and say, yes, it is, and this could rely upon that versus the fieldwork and having them draw out on the field where exactly the house is going. Because if they do that, they have to hire a surveyor to get a state correctly, or their contractor, because most homeowners are not going to know where their property line is to go back to 25 feet, or, you know, seven feet on the sides and actually stake out where they're going to place their house.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff. Planning Commission Staff found this consistent with multiple comprehensive plan policies. It streamlines the development review process, and it also preserves, protects, and maintains the community's street trees. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
All right. No one signed up for the public comment on this one, so we will turn it over to the commissioners. Questions, comments, discussions of this one. Commissioner Kugler?
Thank you. When I read through the language on this packet, and this particular policy, it said trees, and I was, and then you mentioned grand trees. Does it actually define for the, for the residents, what they mean by trees? I mean, I, I kind of know what trees are, but a lot of people call everything from four-inch saplings, trees. But it didn't say grand trees, which I understand.
Yeah, this is for, specifically for grand trees.
Okay, thank you.
If I say trees, I was, it was, it's for grands.
The way it was written in the, in the document that I had, it said just trees, and I, and I know everybody calls saplings and bushes trees, too.
This is for grand trees. Usually grands are usually 32, 34 inches around, they have a certain height and all that kind of thing. But that's what the arborist report would, basically determining what that, what that rating of that tree is. Is it B4, C9, D1? Oh, that's foreign to me, but that's why I have experts on the city that actually know, understand all that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Seaman?
So this says that grand trees may be removed after application and granting of a variance by the appropriate board and/or commission, or, and then the language is added, or by City Council. So were these applications not previously going before City Council, and now they will be or may be?
Well, grand trees normally are, if you're in the city, it's the variance review board unless you're in one of the historic districts. Then again, it would be either the ARC or the BLC, depending upon which district you're in. That language is added in, because council has the same ability to remove them through a planned development. If you're providing, you know, you're wanting to do single-family attached, and, and, you know, you're, you're lining up your eight units, and there's a grand tree that's a foot from where your building area is going to be. This would enable council to approve it. They've been doing it, because that's one of the rights they've had. This is just clarifying that language.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments, discussions from the commissioners before I go ahead and close the public comment? All right. Public comment is closed, and I'll open it up to motions on this one from the commissioners. Commissioner Kress?
I can do this one. I finally pulled up the agenda. I'll move that 27-284, 2.5, arborist report for any tree removal with the contingency of the extra language, be consistent, consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Right. We have a motion of consistency finding, citing that language by Commissioner Kress. Commissioner Bowden?
A second to the motion.
All right. A second to that consistency finding by Commissioner Bowden. Are there any questions, comments, or discussions from the commissioners before we take our vote? I'm not seeing any, then I'll ask the clerk to do our roll call.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Kugler?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Seaman?
No.
Joseph?
No.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioner Seaman and Chair Joseph voted no.
All right, very good. Next up, we have D-1127-284, 3.3, landscape area and tree planting requirements. Mr. Cotton?
Eric, Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. In 2022, there was a privately initiated text amendment that changed the buffer requirements. In that change, whether it was inadvertent or not, it required single-family homes adjacent to commercial businesses. If you were, if you have an existing gas station, for instance, and I bought the lot next door that was zoned, single-family, and I wanted to build a house, by that matrix that's in the code right now, I would be required to put in the buffer between my use, I'd have to put in a 15-foot buffer. That was never in the code from 2022 backwards. We looked, that was never in there. This is basically just cleaning it up and taking that back out. The burden for buffering is most likely, or is always on the commercial building that's being built. If I'm choosing to build next to a commercial use, I know it's there. I can put up an eight-foot tall fence, but I would not be required to put in that 15-foot buffer. Typical 50-foot lot, you have seven on one side, 15 feet, you're already cutting off Typical 50-foot lot, you have seven on one side, 15 feet, you're already cutting off eight feet of the width of your house. So you're going from a 36-foot wide home, for instance, down to, if I do my math right, a 28-foot wide home. So we're taking that out and require, and removing that requirement of the single-family to put in that required buffer.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission staff. Staff found this consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, based on that it streamlines the development review process. And while the setbacks are being removed, there is still regulations within the LDC that would mitigate the future impact of the development. And that concludes our presentation. If you have questions.
Thank you. All right. No one signed up for the public comment on this one, so over to the commissioners for questions, comments. Commissioner Seaborn?
Just to clarify, there's nothing underlined because there's nothing being added, right? This is just a removal of that one provision.
Correct. Going from 15 down to zero.
Okay, and I can't find it stricken in here either. Just wanted to make sure that I'm looking at the right thing. Or where it would have been, I guess.
Yeah, it's hidden in that table, as I recall.
I just don't see it in there. Oh, I see, I see, okay. It's just...
There was some other cleanup. I think there was an asterisk in there. We didn't know what that asterisk went to.
Yeah, we did strike that.
Got it.
It was just sitting in there. We had no idea what that belonged to us, so that's coming out.
Okay, thank you for that.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I did have a question. You said that language was in there, and you all really weren't sure where it was from. You had no idea where, how it got in there?
It was part of a privately initiated text amendment. We're not sure if when, we looked at the ordinance, and it was in the ordinance, we're not sure when MUNICO lays out the tables, if they added it in there at that point. So we're just cleaning it up to take it out, because it's really, the burden should not be on a single-family home to require a 15-foot landscape buffer.
All right.
So that's why it's coming out.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments from the commissioners? Not seeing any at this time, then I will go on ahead and close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the commissioners.
Commissioner Kress? I'd like to recommend consistency for 27-284, 3.3, landscape area and tree planting requirements as consistent with the City of Tampa comprehensive plan.
All right, citing that language, that fancy special, okay. Motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kress citing that language, Ms. Orinata. Is that second? Commissioner Linkos?
I can second that, please.
All right. Second to that motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Linkos. Are there any questions or clarifications needed by the commissioners before we take our vote? Now I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this one.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Kugler?
Yes.
Linkos?
Yes.
Seaborn? Joseph?
No.
Motion carried, six to one. Chair Joseph voted no.
Thank you, all right. Last but not least, we have D12, 27-290.6, air conditioning and pool equipment, and the presenter is Mr. Cotton again.
Eric Cotton, City of Tampa. This is against additional cleanup language. Generators are a thing. Back in the day when this code was written, generators were not, at least the whole-house generators, they were never in the code. So we brought those forward to include those as being part of the, under the whole mechanical equipment, like air conditionings, pool equipment and such. The other thing that's come up is TECO is requiring platforms, when you're in a flood zone, to have a platform that you can get up so the, they can work on the meter or whatever, and this has to be up outside of the flood zone, we're including those, to say those can be at the three-foot setback. And air conditioning stands, again, if you're in a flood zone, you have to have them up out of the flood. So instead of meeting, you know, there might be 10 feet in the air, you can be at the three feet, just clarifying that language. By policy, we've allowed them at the three-foot mark, but it's never been codified, so we're just including that as language in our code.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission staff. Staff did find this consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa comprehensive plan, based off of streamlining the development review process and ensuring that all buildings or structures meet or exceed flood-resistant construction requirements. And that concludes our presentation. If you had any questions.
Thank you, all right. No one signed up for the public comment on this one either, so we will turn it over to commissioners and start off with Commissioner Seaborn.
Okay, so I'm reading it to say that for single-family residential uses, air conditioning units and air conditioning stands, generator and generator stands, and electrical meter platforms and pool equipment shall not be permitted in front of the principal structure. My thought is, who, how can we be, how can we govern where TECO is going to put these electrical meter platforms? Is that not within their discretion? I mean, if it's within the right of way, or?
Oh, this is for, this is for the ones that are on the single-family homes. In my time at this city, I've never seen a, not saying it couldn't happen, but I've never seen a electrical meter in the front of the house. It's always on the side.
Right.
And that's during construction, because that's where they put the meter box on the inside, the box.
Sure.
So they put the, you know, meter on the outside.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just saying, if TECO decided to have a wild hair and wanted to put it in the front for whatever reason, or whatever the front is, if the site is a funky configuration or something like that, would somebody be in noncompliance if that were to happen, if TECO were to make that determination?
I don't know if TECO, I don't have an answer for you, because I don't know if TECO has the ability to override local governments on meter locations as much as the other requirements TECO does require. I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments, discussion items from the commissioners on this one? Not seeing any, then I will close the public comment on this one also, and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Are there any, Commissioner Kress?
Adding in the extra language, I'd like to recommend that 27-290.6, air conditioning and pool equipment, be consistent with the Tampa comprehensive plan.
All righty. Motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kress citing that magical language. Is there a second anywhere out there?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Linkos, got the second on that one. So that's a motion of consistency finding citing that language by Commissioner Kress, a second by Commissioner Linkos. Are there any questions, clarifications from the commissioners needed? No, then I will turn it over to the clerk for our roll call.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress? Kugler?
Yes.
Linkos?
Yes.
Seaborn? Chair Joseph?
No.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioner Seaborn and Chair Joseph voted no.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for the information and for your time.
I'd like to thank y'all for just this afternoon.
All right. All right, that is it for our action items for this meeting, so we will move on to briefings and presentations. And first up, we have is for a status update on the Plant City Comprehensive Plan update, and the presenter is Katrina Corcoran.
Good afternoon. One second while I get this up. All right. Good afternoon, Katrina Corcoran, Planning Commission staff. As was mentioned, I'm here today to present a status update on the Plant City Comprehensive Plan update. Did want to mention that I am co-managing this with my colleague, Unika Mills, and we've been working very closely with Plant City staff, specifically Robin Baker on this update. So we're all very excited about that, and Unika and Robin will actually be giving a very similar presentation to the Plant City City Commission very soon this evening, so thank you for that. Okay. So starting on the current Plant City Comprehensive Plan, it was last updated in 2016. Typically, our comprehensive plans are updated every seven to 10 years, so this plan update is right in line with that timing. We have 10 elements within the Plant City Comprehensive Plan, and you can see the breakdown here of the goals, objectives, and policies. So over 500 policies for us to be looking at with this update, and over 300 pages across the entire plan. The general framework is sorted by people, places, natural spaces, and government, and then you can see the listed elements here. Many of these are required by state statute. And very quickly going over some population and economic trends. So since 2015, Plant City has grown by 15%, and their employment has grown by 39%. And then looking back to 2024, and then ahead through 2050 with our population projections, their population is expected to increase by a whopping 82%, and the employment is expected to grow by 69%. So a big increase in population and jobs there, and also a good time for us to be doing a plan update. This slide goes in overview of the overall comprehensive plan update process. We'll be starting with our visioning, actually starting next week, kicking it off with a survey. I have some more information on that in the upcoming slides. But this portion with visioning is really focused on outreach and community engagement, and that vision ultimately will be approved by the City Commission. Once we get through that visioning process, which we expect to take all of this fall into the winter, we will begin with policy language considerations. So looking at things such as topic gaps, emerging topics, what can be streamlined or reorganized within the sections, and then of course, ensuring that we're meeting all legal requirements for comprehensive plans. And then we really want to focus on the community input as a part of this process, so coordination with the community, stakeholder groups, the planning commission, and the city commission. And then of course, this plan update will be initiated through a comprehensive plan amendment, and then ultimately, we'll have a new Plant City Comprehensive Plan. So going into a bit more detail on the visioning process, a comprehensive plan vision is really going to the community and asking them to produce a shared viewpoint on ideas, issues, and opportunities that can impact the future of Plant City. Typically, a vision is expressed as a statement or a set of statements, and we'll be using that to describe the desired future state of Plant City. And then really, we're focusing on that community participation with the visioning process that provides our local input, which strengthens the support for the plan update, has that education component about what a comprehensive plan is for the community. And then once we have that vision, it provides a solid foundation for policy work that we'll be initiating in 2026. The current Plant City Comprehensive Plan includes a 2040 Plant City vision and has a vision map, and an updated vision will ensure that that language matches the community's ideal future. This slide, again, goes into more detail on the visioning process. So we'll be gathering public input through a survey and outreach, really aiming to make the comprehensive plan accessible to the community. We'll be presenting at public meetings, various stakeholder groups within Plant City, tabling a couple of community events. We have a couple lined up already for August and September. We'll be advertising with printed material, as well as utilizing our social media and public open houses. And then once we have all of that information, all of that survey responses, we'll gather that input and gather the relevant data and ideas that we have from that survey. We'll reorganize it and then clarify the themes to make sure that they're aspirational, specific to Plant City, but also specific to the comprehensive plan, and then easily understood. And then that vision, once it's created, will inform those policy section updates. So I'm very excited about this, our Plant City Visioning Survey. This launches next Monday, and will be open through Friday, October 17th. Should take around five to seven minutes to complete. Of course, if somebody has a lot to say, it might take them a little bit longer. We have multiple choice questions, a couple of open-ended questions, a lot of ranking questions as well, looking at the current quality of life in Plant City, as well as priorities for the future of Plant City. We do have a portion at the end of the survey that allows the option for survey respondents to provide information about themselves. That could be whether they work in Plant City, whether they're retired in Plant City, whether they go to school in Plant City, et cetera. And then we do have a Spanish translation available of that survey. For our responses, we are working on survey incentives. We're working with local businesses to see if anybody would like to provide gift cards, and then folks can provide their email if they wish to be entered to win those. And then we'll be doing a social media geo-fencing. So if you don't know what geo-fencing is, it's where we spend a little bit of money on ads, and then we set up what is a fence around a certain area that those folks would then get the ad. So in that case, Plant City. We've had a lot of success with this with our community plans, so we're very excited to use that. This slide goes a little bit more into detail on the comprehensive plan update process post-vision. We do have a 2050 plant update project page available on our website now. You could see the link there. Again, we'll be focusing heavily on engagement and outreach, not only with the visioning process, but also with the policy language side of this, working with stakeholder groups such as homeowners associations, the development community, and environmental groups, sharing our information, not only through our newsletters and social media, but also with Plant City. We will have our project page, which we've linked above, but also potentially specific project pages for specific section updates. We'll have virtual and in-person meetings, and then a summary of any changes that we may have for the language resulting from public comment. And then of course, our maps and data is based on state legal requirements, and we'll be doing an inventory of what we have today to see what can be updated for those portions. Finally, you all are very familiar with the comprehensive plan amendment process, but just a reminder that the full plan update would be initiated as a CPA, excuse me, formal agency review happens as a part of that process, would occur over several months. One thing that I'll note here that is specific to Plant City is that we will be going in front of the Plant City Planning Board with this update. And then once we have that final adoption hearing, we'll have an amendment effective date and a new Plant City Comprehensive Plan. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions and super excited to get going on this plan update. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions, comments, discussion items, thoughts from the commissioners? Not seeing any. Well, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Look forward to this coming back and move on to our next agenda item, PCCPA 2504, comprehensive plan map amendment east of Paul Buckman Highway, south of Hunter Road, and the presenter is Krista Kelly.
Good afternoon, Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff. As you said, I'm presenting PCCPA 2504. This is a site located east of Paul Buckman Highway, south of Hunter Road. It's a privately initiated future land use map amendment. It is small in scale, approximately 37.1 acres in size. The applicant's requesting a change from Hillsborough County Residential 1 to Plant City Industrial. On the location map, you see the site is in the most northern portion of Plant City. It is within the boundary of the northeast Plant City area master plan. The site's located between Hunter Road to the north and Knights Griffin Road to the south. The CSX rail line and Paul Buckman Highway about the site on its western boundary. The site is surrounded by the Stallworth Business Park Plan Development to the north, south, and east. This is an arrow of the site. Here you see the subject site outlined in pink and the Plant City limits outlined in blue. The subject site consists of three contiguous parcels, each developed with a single-family home on large lots. From a bird's eye view, you see the area surrounding the site reflects a similar development pattern as the proposed amendment site, with rural home sites on large tracts. Additionally, there are large agricultural tracts scattered among the rural communities seen off Paul Buckman Highway. As I noted earlier, in the surrounding, the site is surrounded on three sides by the Stallworth Business Park Plan Development. This PD encompasses 200 acres and was approved for industrial uses based on the adoption of PCCPA 2305 in May of this year. Although the aerial shows the land area surrounding the site to the north, east, and south as agricultural, the recent land use approvals have set the groundwork for the construction of a major logistical center. I'd also like to add that the applicant has stated that the purpose of this amendment 2504 is to facilitate the seamless inclusion of the subject site into the Stallworth Business Park PD. This is a close-up of the site as shown on the northeast master plan map. It illustrates the land use desire. This map illustrates the desired land use pattern envisioned for the future in this area. The subject site and the land that encompasses the Stallworth Business Park are envisioned for future industrial uses. In addition, this area is included within the economic opportunity overlay shown by the blue cross hatching. This overlay was recently adopted as part of the update to the future, update of the northeast master plan map done this year, and it is intended to allow for future transitions of areas from residential to non-residential uses. The land to the west of the subject site, west of Paul Buck, west of Paul Buckman Highway and north of Hunter Road are outside the northeast master plan boundary in the county and are intended for rural-scale uses and agricultural activities. To the south, the area is envisioned for commercial and high-density residential uses. These areas are designated residential nine and 12 on this map. This is the adopted future land use map currently showing the site designated residential 1. This site is pending an annexation to bring it within the city limits. Two of the parcels are pending annexation, just for clarification, and the northern parcel was annexed earlier this year, but still requires a change to the land use designation to a future Plant City designation. As you see, the surrounding area showing the plan amendment site that I described is industrial to the north, south, and east. Beyond that, the area is designated Hillsborough County Residential 1. Now you see the proposed map. If approved, the amendment site would be designated industrial as in the surrounding areas, again, with the intention of incorporating it into the larger project area. intention of incorporating it into the larger project area. Currently, up to 37 dwelling units could be considered for this site, and up to 404,000 square feet of non-residential uses. If the proposed change were approved, the residential uses would not be allowed, and up to 808,000 square feet of non-residential uses could be permitted. The proposed amendment would result in the elimination of residential development potential and would essentially double the amount of non-residential square footage allowed on site. That concludes my presentation on this plan amendment, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions, comments, thoughts on this one from the commissioners? Not seeing any. Well, thank you for the information, Krista. We will move on to our next agenda item, that may be yours too. PCCPA 25-05, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, Frontage Road, west of Charlie Taylor Road.
Thank you. Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff. I'm presenting on behalf of Unika Mills. This is her plan amendment. She's in Plant City presenting the comprehensive plan update. So, this is CPA 2505. The site is located front, on Frontage Road, or north of Frontage Road, west of Charlie Taylor Road. This is a privately initiated large-scale amendment, approximately 78.4 acres in size, and the applicant is requesting a change from Hillsborough County Residential 1 to Plant City Residential 12. The location map shows the site located in the northern portion of Plant City. It is within the boundary of the northeast Plant City Area Master Plan, and it is located on the north side of Frontage Road between Park Road and Charlie Taylor Road. Here's an aerial of the subject site outlined in pink. We have Frontage Road and I-4 to the south, which, that runs east to west. The subject site is currently developed with crop lands, or it's used for agricultural purposes, and the surrounding development pattern consists of large lots, single-family residential uses to the west and south. Large areas of wetland are located to the north of the site, and at this point, I'd want to point out that to the east of the site, the land shown as pasture land was a plan amendment that recently came before you, PCCPA 2210, which was approved for industrial use. There are a few subdivisions in the area that have been built and are not shown on this aerial. This is the northeast master plan map, again, showing the site envisioned for residential 12 development on the northern portion of the site. Also, in the southern portion of the site, it is also encompassed by the economic opportunity overlay. Again, this is an overlay that was included in the update of the northeast master plan's preferred land use scenario map, intended to facilitate the transition of residential uses to non-residential uses, or just provide land use flexibility. Here you see the adopted future land use map currently showing the site designated Residential 1. It's adjacent to the plan amendment site I discussed that is now industrial to the east. The site obtains access from Swindell Road, which is on the eastern portion of the site, and the remaining area to the west and to the south of the site are in the unincorporated county and designated Residential 1. This map shows the site designated Residential 12, if approved. Again, it's shown in the orange, similar to what was envisioned by the northeast master plan. Currently, under the Residential 1 designation, up to 78 dwelling units could be considered, and up to 849,000 square feet of non-residential uses could potentially be developed. If the change were approved to Residential 12, this would increase to 936 dwelling units, and over a million square feet of non-residential uses could be considered. In summary, the proposed amendment would result in an increase in both residential and non-residential square footage. Again, this is a briefing, so I'm happy to answer any questions, and that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions, comments? Yes, Commissioner Kugler?
Thank you. I think it's about 78 acres, more or less, and the only access at this point is the Swindell Road. There's no other, there's no other outlet or inlet to that property.
There is not. It, the site abuts into Swindell Road at this time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions from the commissioners, comments? Not seeing any. Well, thank you for the information. Look forward to this one coming back, and we will move on to our next item of business, number five, the Executive Director's Report, Status Report, Contracts, and Other Items, and the presenter is Melissa Zornita.
Good afternoon, Melissa Zornita, Executive Director. In front of you, you should have a copy of my Executive Director's Report. The last month has been very full of outreach related to the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. We have participated in 15 meetings with community stakeholders, either the four that we put on, which we hosted one in each of the four council districts, or attending different neighborhood meetings, or meeting with the development industry, for example. And that was all within about a three-week period of time. So, it was a very busy three weeks for staff. We also, at the same time, had an online survey to get input on the different, the two policies that Tampa City Council asked us to get input on. The survey replicated the activity that was done at the four district community meetings, and it closed yesterday, and we had 594 survey respondents. And Yassir is busily, probably back there trying to crunch numbers and give us analysis of that survey data to see how it matches or differs from the feedback we got at the community meetings. Our goal is to turn around, and we need to provide City Council with some alternative language in response to all of this feedback, a week in advance of their August 28 hearing. So that's a pretty quick turnaround. But that's, that's the plan, and staff has been doing a pretty amazing job to get all this done in such a quick timeframe. Happy to discuss any of the other items that are on the list, but, oh, I should mention that we did support the Flip Junior program, we, with the Tampa Heights Neighborhood, Tampa Heights Junior Civic Association, and they, I got to go to one of their meetings at Tampa Heights and help them prepare to come and talk to Commissioner Joseph as part of their field trip at the end, culminating the end of their camp. They got to come here after taking the Pirate Water Taxi and other things and present some of their ideas to him. So that was a really neat experience. Appreciate you participating in that again. And, but it, as always, is very rewarding to get to work with the kids. They have some, some pretty fun ideas. Our next meeting is on September 8th. We will have a public hearing on the two items that Krista just presented on. We are still awaiting confirmation from Plant City on the joint meeting we did, that we pulled you all on in July. There was a majority of the planning commissioners who could attend, so we told them we could do November 24th, but they still have to get that approved through their City Commission. So as soon as I hear back on that, I'll let you all know. There are two, there were only two actions. A lot of the jurisdictions didn't have a lot of plan amendment activity in July, since they take, some of them take breaks at that point. The, but there were two plan amendments that were moved forward by Tampa City Council. One, the one on Bay to Bay, that you all might remember, you asked us to look at that, that segment of Bay to Bay for a little bit larger study about increasing the density along all of that, was adopted with second reading scheduled later this month. And then, the text amendment related to the Central Business District periphery, which is really the channel-side area, increasing the density in that area was also, was approved for transmittal to the state on, at the end of last month. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All righty. Anybody have any questions, comments, discussions for our executive director? No? Well, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
We will move on to our next agenda item, which is other business, chair's business, I have none, old business. I don't believe there is any. Does anybody have any new business for us? Not seeing any rush to that. I will move on to committee reports. Does anybody have any committee reports for us? Nope, I don't have one myself. Our next TPO board meeting is this Wednesday, so I'll be right back up here on Wednesday morning for that, and report that to you at our next meeting, August, our September meeting. So, going once, going twice on committee reports. Not seeing any. Then that is the end of this meeting. What time are we starting our, 5:30? All right. We'll see everybody back here at 5:30 for our public hearings, and at 4:40, this regular meeting is adjourned.